Right now, we're very busy. So the first thing I'll do is take a quick roll call and everybody needs to do, give a verbal reply for this. The cord is on, okay. So, member Lifer?
Yes, here.
Okay. Member Cervantes?
Here.
Member Kenny?
Here.
Member Andrews is here and member Vitale has not shown up yet. Segue him in when that occurs. And it's like I said, a very brief agenda today, but is there any reordering at all of the agenda items that people would like to request? Okay. In one motion, I'd like to adopt the addition of the agenda, so I need a motion and a second for that.
I move to adopt the agenda. It's written.
Second.
All in favor, it was a new roll call again. Member Kenny?
Aye.
Member Cervantes?
Aye.
Member Lifer?
Aye.
And member Andrew's aye as well, so now we can get started. Like I said, this is a pretty, pretty short meeting and we won't even have any real voting to do on this, but there's some explanation that needs to occur regarding the work going forward. As you all know, and it's sort of a preface to this, that we've hired two positions, if you will, already for our CFD team. We've got a bond and disclosure council now with Best Beth and Cleaver. And Doug Anderson with Urban Futures is our municipal services advisor. So today, we're going to talk about our two, two more unfilled positions. Bond underwriting services and then a CFD administration services. After that, we may have a couple more yet that we have to do, we're still trying to figure all that out. I'm not sure they would be brought on in the same way, but we'll, we'll let you know how that's going to occur. So I'm going to turn it over now to Nikki, who's been busy writing these RFPs and getting them distributed and so on, for an explanation of what's going on right now.
All right, thank you, Terry. Good afternoon, everyone. So as Terry mentioned, at your last regular meeting, we reviewed and made a recommendation to the full board to put out RFPs for the bond underwriting services and CFD administration services. Both of those RFPs were reviewed and put together along with our municipal advisor Doug Anderson. So the scope, the cost sheets, all of that were reviewed by him before we brought those to this group as well as the full board. The board did vote to pass both last night. And I'm happy to report Diego got right on it this morning. So we posted both RFPs in BidNet as well as on our website. It is only a two-week turnaround. We have those posted today, they close on June the 8th, which is a Tuesday. That was based on recommendation by Doug Anderson. That's a typical turnaround timeline for these types of RFPs in his experience. So similar to what we did, basically the same as what we did when we hired the municipal advisor as well as bond and disclosure council. I worked with the same matrix or scoring criteria matrix that, you know, I'm sure you guys recognized it from the last time around. I, based on the evaluation criteria from each RFP, right now, we'll look at the bond underwriting first. Put that together and then sent that, this to Doug Anderson for review. And I'm going to share my screen and I think similar to the last time, we'll just like edit it as we go. Again, he has reviewed this and updated it with his recommendations. And then we can again build in any feedback or thoughts you, the CFD committee might have. Does everybody see this?
Yes.
I should probably zoom out a little bit, hold on. So we can see the whole thing. I think I made it 110. Come on. Okay. So Doug, I know you cannot see, but we'll, I'll just walk through. And if you have any commentary you can provide on each of the criteria, I'd appreciate that. So just like, just like last time, we have the top three, which are yes, no. So when, once the deadline comes in June 8th, I will work on reviewing them to make sure they're a complete proposal package. And similar to last time, I'll just show you. These, I'm not sure if they'll change or not, but this is what, I think I already did change them actually. I'll verify that all of those are in the proposals before they even go out for scoring. As well as that they're, they confirm or provide proof that they're registered with Securities and Exchange Commission as well as MSRB and FINRA. As well as providing proof of those filings, licenses and certifications. So if those things are not there, if they get a no, that proposal doesn't even move forward. So similar to, I think, both of our others, we also have that they are required to provide a list of at least five client references that the firm has provided similar services for. So as you can see with scoring considerations, that's especially experienced with local agencies, also mid to large agencies, and these should be specific to CFD bonds. Does anyone have any thoughts or comments? Does that sound good? Yeah, okay, I'll keep going.
Nikki, quick question, sorry. So mid to large is, is, which is Altadena Library, CFD? Is it a mid, is it a large, is it a small?
Doug, what would you say? I would guess we're small to mid if that.
Yeah, I would say more of actually a midsize, you know, with your authority at 24 million, that's, that's pretty good size. I mean, there are certainly agencies that issue one or two million or $3 million bonds. So yeah, I would put you as far as the issuance size in the mid-range. And I think that was our thought on that, I think.
Okay, great, just wanted, I just want to do that comparison, thanks.
Good question, thank you, Kim. Um, the next one is describing the firm's marketing and distribution capabilities specific to our Altadena CFD. And that would be what resources and strategies they would approach the bond issuance process and market to local and regional buyers, as we talked about with Urban Futures wanting to present that locally before moving forward to a larger bond sale. Any feedback there, Doug, you have anything to say?
I think, you know, hopefully the, the proposers will pick up on that. And if they have any experience at all with this, they will hopefully highlight that. And if not, I mean, we'll just have to pick the best fit and hopefully work with those folks. But I, I know that there are some on the list that I gave you that do have experience with that. So hopefully that'll come through in their proposals.
Perfect, thank you.
Hey Nikki, before you go on, yeah, actually Doug, I had raised that question with you before about the, the language and certainly, yeah, experienced proposals will certainly provide that. Question to you Nikki, as far as the points, do you want to go over that at the end?
Um, I, I guess.
Go through the descriptions and then the points.
We could do that and I want, I'm going to lean on Doug in terms of the weighted scoring because as you can see, he feels like, in his experience, pricing is really like one of the key determiners of who gets selected. So maybe this is a good time to talk about that as our next scoring criteria is the pricing schedule to be transparent, responsive, reasonable and including the through breakdown of costs. And if you think back to the RFP, the cost sheet is much different than any of the other ones that we've done. So Doug, do you want to talk about that?
Sure, so I, I think this started out looking like the typical, the prior ones you had done and the CFD administrator where the points are kind of spread across these categories. However, I spoke with Nikki and talked about the fact for an underwriter, the pricing is going to be very important and certainly with the size of your bond issue, they are going to be proposing a percentage of the bond issue as their fee. So we thought that was fairly important to have that be the first priority. I, I will share that with most agencies and cities that we work with, the price is pretty much all they look at. So I wouldn't recommend that here because I know we want to have a nice fit and people that we can work with and talk about some of these other, you know, for, for instance, the marketing program. So you will certainly off of BidNet probably get some proposers who offer an astounding low fee. However, those firms would not offer much in the way of customer service, we'll call it. So while it's, I think, the most important factor, it's not the single factor that we should look at. So that's why we listed it at half, thinking it's, it's fairly important. But I think for your benefit, these other categories should have some weight as well.
I had one thought actually Doug, looking at it now. Should there be more of a discrepancy between lowest cost, second lowest? Than just one point differential?
Um, I guess that, if we didn't just look at the whole picture and figure out how these other categories will weigh in. If we've got one out of 10. Yeah, I mean, maybe you want to make that a two-point difference between each step. I mean, you may end up getting 12 proposals, so two points would certainly separate them a lot. I'm thinking you're going to get at least 10. So, you know, that would be a 10-point difference between the lowest and highest.
Yeah. Well, a 20-point difference if we did it. I don't know, what are everybody else's thoughts? I'm just trying.
I think you should accommodate some, some variance in the pricing, but you know, as Doug indicated, there's some other variables we need to take into consideration. And I know that that was very important for us to ensure that we had a good marketing strategy to, you know, propose potentially selling the bonds to the citizens of Altadena. So it's, that was very important to us, to make sure that, that has enough weight there as well. So, but I think that relative again to Nikki, your, your point, I think that at least two points really should be distinguishing from one, one price point to another.
Yeah, so maybe we'll score it that way, third would get 46.
Yeah, I, I think that's good. You know, I think that would still allow for the third or fourth lowest to shine in other areas if, if that's the case. So yeah, I think that works.
Okay.
Okay, Doug, this is Terry. To what degree do the, does that sort of balance in the act between what they're charging and what they give us in terms of customer service? What does that depend on? Is it, you know, we would expect bigger, bigger sales, if you will, with, with, whether or not, you know, doubling out a bunch of services or answering a lot of questions for us? I, I don't know enough about this whole area to, to phrase this elegantly. But I just, I just wonder, you know, I've heard that different pitches to us about how the bond should be sold and what the market is and so on. It seems to me there's a tremendous variation on what's going on out there. So how do you zero in on the, on the real value that they're offering and it's, it's nothing but price?
Well, I think you're obviously going to want somebody, a firm that is involved day to day, really. I mean, we're going to want their input at various steps along the way. Putting together the credit package, advising us if we have, you know, weekly or bi-monthly calls. We'll want them to update us on the market at that point so we can kind of keep track of where rates are. So it's, uh, it's something where we're going to want full participation. The firms, you know, if you get 10 proposals, one or two of them are going to be so low that you'll wonder, how are they making any money? Well, you know, they're not going to be as available as, as some of the other folks. So, excuse me, that, that was my comment on, you know, the absolute lowest will not automatically be the best fit. So I think we'll want to look at a combination. I did give Nikki a list of four firms that we've worked with. I know they will all propose, they, they would be good, I think, a good fit for the district, any, any one of the four. But yeah, I mean, we will want to know who they are and know that they will be around and be available, basically.
Okay, and are they likely to itemize like, things like that, the number of meetings they'll have or the number of phone calls that are included in their plan? Or is that something that we just figure out on our own?
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll, we'll know, we'll be able to advise you on the firms that proposed and tell you which ones just expect to sell the bonds without much input and which ones would be more hands-on.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so moving on. Does the proposal present a grasp of the district priorities, project scope, intent and timeline? This is what we had on the last two, which I think is what we're looking at. Do they talk about our strategic plan or the ARG reports that involve the costing? Basically, did they do their homework on our system and, and represent that in the proposal? Next, ability and capacity to perform the work. So that's going to be demonstrating to us who the key point person or persons will be as well as like, who else is available in their firm? This is where we built in preference to someone local. I don't know if the group feels like we should keep that in there as well?
Uh. If, if I can comment, I, most of these firms are going to be either in San Francisco, Los Angeles. There are a few that have sort of outside offices that have followed their senior people to probably somewhere close to their home. But, you know, the, the firms that are in this space are mainly in San Francisco and Los Angeles.
Okay. So do we want to leave that language in there or no?
I'm, I'm inclined to take it out Nikki, only because it would give maybe an unfair advantage or an unfair advantage that no one else could duplicate, if you see what I mean. If everybody's dialing in from San Francisco and Los Angeles, then, you know, they're not going to be no vocal really to begin with.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Right.
And Doug, just one more follow-up question on, on that that's occurring. Do typically these bond underwriters work in small teams where they would have, you know, someone that runs the big picture and somebody that's doing the, the day-to-day work? Or is it usually an individual that gets involved with this?
Yeah, you'll have a small team, you'll have a principal who will be the main contact for phone calls and interaction. They'll typically have an associate that's with them that'll run numbers, you know, for various scenarios. And then as we get closer to pricing, there'll be other, they'll have their pricing desk involved, which are just basically bond traders, that's all they do all day long. But you should have at least two that'll be main contacts.
Thank you.
All right. Um, and lastly, this was just our likelihood of success category. That's like, you know, looking at it, who we think will be most successful in the firm that works with us. So that's the scoring. Does anybody have any thoughts, opinions? Are we okay with the way this criteria looks?
It seems good to me. I guess I keep thinking about the 50% total points on the pricing because if the price is super low and, you know, the comment here is, it should be reasonable. If what we're looking for is a more whole holistic approach, for example, it does seem to me that mentioning the strategic plan is a really important thing. And somehow, if you have a really low cost and they mention the strategic plan, but they don't, like, I just wonder if the low cost should be the whole reasoning behind that 50% category? Because there's probably a, a bid that might seem unreasonable that it's so low in comparison to some of the other ones. But I don't really know how to get at that other than changing the percentages somehow to say that this is 45 points versus there's another category that's now 10 that goes up five or something like that. That's the only, because I just worry about somebody or a firm really lowballing and then we don't really know exactly, they might get a ton of points. And then how do we navigate that when we're making our final decision? Just a thought.
That's a good point, that's a good point, Amy. And I think that part of the catch there would be the, the last item, which is the proposal that's demonstrated likelihood of success. And as our, our way of, if you will, what feels right, what, what does this pass the smell test? So in, is, if they did provide the lowest score, even though we may feel it's questionable, I think whether it be 50 or 40 points, whatever we want to set that, that maximum point value at, I think that last one is where we would catch them as well. Because I mean, that, all things being equal, this, this, the last, the last scoring criteria gives us that wiggle room to kind of, you know, really kind of figure out which one we think is going to be successful. And that could be because we just don't feel that the marketing plan is correct or that the, the scoring, the, the price is so low that something else is going to give. So that may, maybe it's giving us lip service and we can, we can reflect it that way.
Which is then making me double, like, question myself about changing the scoring with the cost. Because let's say you're the seventh lowest cost and you're, you score really high everywhere else, you're only losing seven points versus 14.
Right.
You know? So I think, yeah, we're thinking about that the wrong way.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good point, Amy, that you make. And the one thing that I can think of would be if you took the 50 points on pricing and you carved out 10 or 20 for new value-added services or something like that, some, some generic bundle of, of other good things they're giving to you for that particular price. I don't know exactly what it would be, but it's one way to deal with it, in addition to what Rush wants to say.
Okay. The other way we could do it is maybe make pricing 45 and then you'd lose a point, you know, or whatever, lowest, and then keep going. And then maybe make likelihood of success 15. What do we think about that?
I mean, that, that would certainly work, I mean, it gives us that latitude. Yeah, I mean, I, I like that catch-all because it gives us that, that flexibility. I mean, I, as I mentioned, I really like the, the, the marketing and distribution capabilities, i.e. what's your marketing plan? But I'm okay leaving that because we can kind of catch, you know, our catch-all is the last one.
Yeah. So does this feel better to everyone?
Yeah.
It does for me, yeah.
Yeah, that's a really good point. Because I mean, you have to kind of assume, like, let's say it's someone just super lowballs, that the proposal's probably not going to be that good anyway. But what if that's not the case, you know? So I guess we'll have to see.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it'll become self-evident. I mean, if the one is, is, you know, precipitously lower than the others. I mean, obviously it's something that's not going to, going to look right. Either it was a mistake and it, and it is a mistake, they won't be able to honor it any way. They're going to have, they're, they're going to, they're going to sacrifice something along the way. So that sacrifice is just going to hurt us in the.
Okay.
And Doug, a question for you, in your experience, have these variations in pricing been like really big? I mean, like, you know, like ones a million, let's say another is 500,000 or east, you know what I'm saying? Are they a little closer than that?
No, I, I think they'll all be fairly close, but there definitely will be one or two that are noticeably lower. And I'm thinking of big firms like a JP Morgan or something, if they happen to see this proposal. You know, and that's a firm that obviously it's a national firm. Again, they may be the lowest price-wise, but you're not going to get the personable level of service that you will from, you know, the folks that we typically work with, that are with clients of your size. So, yeah, I think most will be, you know, you'll have a bundle that are fairly close and you'll have probably one or two outliers.
All right, so is everybody okay with this scoring criteria for the bond underwriting?
Yes.
So before we move on to the next one, I did want to throw out there that we weren't tasked by the CFD committee with putting together like, as structured scoring teams as we did the last two RFPs. So I talked to Terry about potentially just asking the group who would want to be involved, if you have time. We have to have a really quick turnaround on these in order to get them to the CFD committee the following week. So I'm happy to, like, because Doug and I will obviously sit on both scoring teams. But if there's members of this group who would like to be involved, we're happy to include you. But again, it closes on June 8th, which is a Tuesday. I'll plan to get them out that night, but we'll probably have to convene either a day or two later to review our scoring and, and go from there.
Nikki, could you take us through the, the duties or the work that that would entail in your, in your eyes?
Yeah, so depending on how many we get, like if with the municipal advisor and the bond and disclosure council, each group scored all of them because we only got five for bond council and seven for municipal advisor. If we get 10, like Doug said, I'd probably have less people score each one. If it's just him and I and let's say one person from this group, I think we'd all have to score all. So it just, you know, I don't, I don't know how many pages each of these comes in looking like. I probably spent, I would say, two hours reviewing proposals for each of the other RFPs to prepare for coming together as a group and, and doing our cumulative scoring. So again, that's kind of what we'd be looking at.
What about reference checking?
So typically I do that once we put our scoring together and make a decision and I'll, I'll call to reference check before we take a recommendation to the CFD committee.
Okay.
So is there anyone that would like to participate in the bond underwriting scoring?
Nikki, sorry, this is Kim. Remind me, the, the meeting that we're having with everyone else kind of occurs right in the same timeframe, true?
It is June 14th is the rescheduled date.
Oh, I'm sorry, for some reason I thought it was on the.
It was originally on the 9th, but the, the second Wednesday was so early that we decided to cancel that and push it so that we'd have time to look at these RFPs and the proposals and, and bring them to the full CFD committee. Because the, the board.
But this is the joint meeting, sorry, this is the joint meeting that we're having?
No, the joint meeting is the 10th, that is correct.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying. So this is kind of a busy time period. So can you just remind me the time of that joint meeting and the length?
The joint meeting is on the 10th at, I believe, 2:00 PM. Diego, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm pretty sure it's 2:00 on that Thursday. And that's.
2:00 to 4:00, I think.
Yeah.
2:00 to 4:00.
Yeah.
All right.
And we're actually going to talk about that as our third discussion item.
Sorry, just, I was trying to kind of, I mean, if, if. Thank you.
Okay.
Nikki, I have a question, I can, I can help for sure, so.
Okay.
I'm, I'm volunteering.
Okay.
Nikki, I would help as well, but as soon as we're done with the meeting on the, the 10th, I'm, I'm going to be out of town. So I, I didn't catch the meeting on the 14th, what, what meeting was that?
So we rescheduled the regular CFD committee meeting.
Okay, yeah, unfortunately I won't be there available for that one then.
Okay. All right. So we'll have Terry, myself and Doug score the bond underwriting proposals. Does that sound good? All right, so I will stop that share and bring up the next one, which is.
So Nikki, I have a, there's a comment that I didn't make last time, but, and it's not necessarily, it's mentioned in both of these. One of the items says emphasis on fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers. And maybe this is the conversation more that we're going to have at the joint meeting. So I think it was said at our last meeting, well, we have authority up to 24 million. And I don't know if there's an assumption that therefore, because we have authority, we will, we, we might as well, we might as well do it because we have the authority, right? And so I don't know where there's the point for the kind of the pushback to say, but what do we really need? Because if we really need 15 or 16, it's obviously more beneficial for the taxpayers not to go to the full authority. So, you know, I, I was just reacting to reading that here on the scoring sheets and realizing that I didn't really say that at our previous meeting. And I'm assuming it's more a conversation for the joint meeting. But I wanted to throw it out here in the safe space of the CFD.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. That's, that's an excellent point and question. So there's a lot of discussion in the facilities committee meeting around, because we're meeting with the capital project managers every week. They're looking, they looked at the ARG reports and all of those cost estimates, put together a spreadsheet for us to look at in terms of like, the contingency of, you know, costs go up as well as a, a 5% escalator because we don't know when we're going to start the projects. So there's going to be a lot of discussion about that next week at the joint meeting. Because we're going to be working with the capital project management firm to put together a realistic amount of money that would be needed to tackle the projects that, that need to be done. But again, that will be done in coordination with the whole bond issuance process.
All right, and then the other question, and again, I don't know who, who answers it or at what point. Because we are using the same vehicle, the same taxation vehicle to tax, using, to repay the bond, but then in some number of years to switch to be both repaying the bond and doing operating costs. I'm just wondering when there's the explanation kind of on, how does that work? You know, are we paying more of the bond in the beginning? Because then we won't be able to pay as much, you, you know, and still be within our limit of how much we can tax. So that's, I don't know who explains that, like which of these different entities and when that occurs. But that's just something I'm interested in, kind of understanding that we, that the funds are there to fill all the requirements of what we told people we were going to do. That the funds are there to fill all the requirements of what we told people we were going to do with that money.
Right, um, so our NBS, which is our special tax assessment firm. When we were putting together the rate and method of apportionment information for the CFD formation, that, um, like modeling was included. So they, I think the modeling was that if we did two twelve million dollar bond issuances. Versus like one twenty-four million and that was at the max and it showed. Year after year what it would look like, like in the beginning, we would be bonding twelve million. So this is what it would mean in terms of like. What would hit the tax rule? And then by year twenty-five, twenty-six, this is what it looks like when services and operations kick in. I I don't know if Doug can speak to that, but I definitely know, um, the CFD formation. The CFD administrator that we're hiring will be the person that advises us on all of that moving forward.
I I would add, uh, with respect to the bond issue in particular. There will be very explicit language that says that the services component, when it comes on board. Is not pledged to debt service. So the only thing that's pledged to debt service is the debt service portion of the special tax. The services component that comes on later is just for services. So that would not affect the bond repayment.
Right, and I'm just looking for a kind of a pictorial explanation, if you will, how when we. Can only tax a certain amount, we can pay less towards repayment of the bond. When the other stuff kicks in, because then we'll have two obligations on the same pot of money. And so I'm just wondering. I'm I'm looking for how do we explain to people that this is, you know, how how do you pay less on bonds? And does that, you know, make it more expensive to taxpayers? Or maybe it doesn't matter at all. And and it's just, you know, looking at that explanation.
Yeah, and I have, um, a chart that would. Make it easier to see. I would just have to dig and find it because it was part of the whole formation process last summer. That really kind of spells it out. So basically, I think the way. If I can remember what it looked like, it was almost like we issued the bonds and it's like five cents per square foot. That would be levied through the the measure Z that would show up on the tax roll. And then you'd still have that separate parcel tax, the measure A on the tax roll as well. And then when, uh, measure A sunsets in, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five. It would then go up to that higher purse, uh, square foot number. Be it, would it be nine percent? It just depends on how much we bond out, but then it covers both. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that's, I just wasn't sure if it's advantageous to. Pay more on the bond at the beginning while you can. Do you see what I mean? And then pay less later. Kind of like you're prepaying, you know, if it was your home mortgage and maybe it's not at all the same. And that's why I'm looking for. The bond people to help explain. So sorry, sorry if I'm.
No, those are good questions. I'm sure a lot of people have the same ones. Did you want to speak to that, Doug, or no? I thought I saw you.
Yeah, if, um. We can talk with the underwriter, there may be a way to sort of leverage those first three or four years before the services component comes on board. I guess we'll have to weigh that with. Public perception that they're also still paying the measure A. Uh, and not overwhelm people. But yeah, there there could be some opportunity to to goose up the first three or four principal payments a little bit. Um, you know, we can customize schedules in that way. So that's certainly something that's possible.
Okay. Yeah, I was just kind of digging through some of my old agendas, but I'll find that chart and share it with you, Kim. I'll send it to the whole, uh, committee if everyone would be interested in looking at that. And again, that's just predicting, you know, um, but I do think it was like a good way to illustrate what you're asking. So. Okay. So are we good to move on to the CFD administration scoring? Okay. Here we go. This is not, are you seeing it? Are you seeing the bond underwriting or CFD administration?
CFD administration.
Okay, good. It was, it came up opposite on my screen. So. All right, so, um, just to walk through again, um, this, the language was pulled out of the. The scoring criteria out of the RFP. I'm, I I don't know if you guys noticed or if I pointed that out, but when, um. Doug reviewed the RFP, there were no specific qualifications that we needed to list in that RFP. So that kind of pulled out those top, those other two knockout questions, as you can see. So the, the only thing we'll be looking at is to make sure that they have a complete proposal package. Uh, similar to a couple of the other ones that we did was providing a list of other governmental agencies who the firm is presently under contract. And again, with, uh, mid to large agencies and experience with local agencies. Describe tools for research and analysis for the special tax bond issuance. My understand, my understanding of that is. Where CFD administration is going to get involved right now is to provide like the special tax tables. That will be needed by the bond underwriting and municipal advisory team. To, you know, set the numbers. Doug, you can speak more knowledgeably to that than I can.
Yeah, so, uh, when we do the official statement, which is the offering document. You know, sometimes called a prospectus in other industries, but the basically the the disclosure document that'll go to potential bond buyers. They'll want information about the CFD. So our CFD administrator at that point will be. Will be deemed to be the special tax consultant just for the bond issue. So they will prepare very specific tables that show the assessed value of the district, all the properties. The, uh, relationship of the assessed value to the bond amount. Uh, any delinquencies over the past few years, which of course, since we have a newer district, they'll probably have to rely more on. Just the general property tax delinquencies, but they'll they'll be getting information from the county and sort of compiling things and giving us. Very specific information tables that we will put into that offering document. So that'll, that'll be the bulk of their work, uh, immediately.
Do we think that that should be weighted higher than five? I'm just wondering.
Um, did we cover it anywhere else? Let me just skim these. Contracts. Work. Um, got ability and capacity to perform the work at twenty. Hmm. No, I think that, yeah, I mean, if we put ten there on that second item, you've got to take it from somewhere else. Um. I'm not sure where you would do that.
Like I said, we could just keep going down and see if.
Yeah.
Uh, the group has thoughts. Okay, so next one was demonstrates process for annual assessment preparation, delinquency research and analysis and annual disclosure requirements. That was like. A lot of what the scope of work is, so we'll want them to describe. Um. You know, the process for doing that, maybe their experience in handling that, uh, with other agencies. Pricing schedule is transparent, responsive and reasonable, um. Doug, do you want to talk about what the pricing will probably look like coming in?
You know, um, I don't think we. I don't think we defined it as well as we did on the underwriting list. So I I think they will come back with. Sort of, uh, you know, flat fees. And they're typically not terribly expensive, so these should be all fairly close. They all, they all know what each other charges. They're sort of less. Players in this space. There might be, you might get four or five proposals, I think, in this area. So they should be fairly close.
So not as much of a determining factor, it looks like.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so.
Okay. All right, um, proposer has completed five similar contracts within the last five years, especially a special district and or library system contract.
I think if you needed to, uh, identify additional points, I think you could probably take it from this category.
Yeah.
I would agree.
Do we want to mention? Similar contracts dealing with CFD administration?
I think it'd be clear.
Yeah, it would be.
That's a good point.
Similar CFD. Okay, so I'm going to add that in there. Yeah. And we want to take this one down to.
I think you can, you can drop it down to ten.
Okay. And do we want to make this one ten? The research and analysis.
If, yeah, I mean, I I think so. I think that that should be a little bit higher.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, yeah. And then this is exactly the same as in the other place, which is, did you do your research about us? What do you know about the work that we've done and where we're heading? Um, next is that ability and capacity to perform the work. So seeing who we're going to directly work with, um. Is this an area or is this a, um, scoring area that we should prefer someone local? Would you say, Doug, or no?
Um, this is sort of an interesting group there. I know some are out in the desert, some, they have various office locations. I don't know. That the, you know, the local presence is going to be as important. So I, I mean, I think the ability and capacity to perform the work is certainly important and. And I think that twenty points is merited there, but maybe you could just. Take out that local presence, you know, those two words.
Yeah, I agree with that, um, Doug, these days we're likely to do the whole thing over Zoom anyway, so.
Yeah. Okay.
But, you know, I I would suggest to the group is that, you know, if we've got. Eight proposals and seven are, you know, out of the area and we've had one that's local. You know, passing Altina, I mean, I I would hope all of this would would think about giving them a little higher bump just because we want to support a local economy.
What if we just add local office? You know?
I don't think so. I mean, just it gives us that, in other words, we put it in there, at least gives us that latitude to to give a bump that they have a local office.
Local office preferable.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not certainly not ideal killers. It's just, you know, it just gives us that wiggle room to be able to give. Additional points to a, a, a local.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And then, of course, lastly, the demonstrated likelihood of success. All right.
So Nikki, this is the. The contractor who will be with the CFD for a long time, right?
Correct.
Not, not just caring about the bond, but kind of the whole thing. So. I guess it's the, it's the third and the fourth question that kind of get to. Kind of the duties. So the first one about, you know, how would they approach the bond issuance process, the special tax problem? And then this, the one right after that that talks about annual assessment prep. So is, I mean, is that, do you think those two cover all of the responsibilities and the areas that they'll be working with us in?
Yeah, it's really detailed. Do you want me to pull up the RFP?
No, no, no. I believe you. I just wanted to make sure because, you know. And so I guess, so. That's twenty points altogether. That's why, I guess that's where I was maybe going is also is, is it? Whew. So we're asking about their experience and kind of how they would do that for us both a little in those?
Maybe what we could do is move this down to right above ability and capacity. So like. Describe how you handle this work and then who's going to do it and each of them could be fifteen.
Okay.
Because I I actually, I see your point. This is the work that's going to have to get done regularly for us. How does the group feel about that?
Yeah.
That seems like a good idea.
Okay, so I'm going to cut this from here. Insert there. Yeah, I'll make this fifteen, not fifteen. Okay. Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. All right. Very good. We do this really well. I'm I'm so impressed, especially because we're not even in the same room, you know? Went super smooth the last time too. So wonderful.
It'll be interesting being in meetings in person again. Maybe Zoom works better. I don't know.
Yeah. It just amazes me. You think this is something you'd have to have like up on a board somewhere and everyone's in the room together, but I guess not. So as far as this scoring team, I'm probably going to ask, um, our administrative services manager Nicole. Uh, to sit in in this group because this is the firm that she'll work closely with in the CFD administration work each year. So that would mean her, Doug, myself. I don't know if Terry, you want to do both?
Uh, do both, uh, projects?
Both, um, proposal scoring or no?
Sure, no, I'm I'm fine. I mean, it wasn't that that onerous or burdensome. It would be interesting actually to do that last time, so. I mean, how, Doug, how many would you, I don't know if you said this, like forgive me if you have. What would you expect would be the the number of proposals we would give for this position?
I, yeah, I'm thinking probably five. Uh, there's, there's just not that many firms that do this specialty work, so.
So, you know, maybe fifteen total between the two of them, right?
I'm sorry, say again?
I said, yeah, I think you said ten for the, uh, for the, uh, bond underwriter. So probably fifteen. Somewhere in the ballpark of fifteen proposals to go over.
Yeah, I think that's a good guess.
Okay, good. No, I mean.
Okay. And maybe what I'll do, so each team has four, is I'll, I'll identify another staff person that can help us with the bond underwriting review. I'm sure I could talk Christopher or someone into doing it, so. He enjoyed helping us go through the bond council proposals last time, so. Um, all right. Yeah, yeah. He's done a lot of RFPs and review of of proposals, so I think it comes kind of naturally to him.
And he likes cerebral things, I think.
Yes, yes, he does. All right, so there, there is that. So I guess back to you, Terry.
Yeah, the the last item would be, um, looking at, uh, four C, which is a discussion of the. Special trustees meeting with CFD and ad hoc facilities. Um, and we talked a little bit about this last night. There's really not an agenda set for it yet. I think Katie was thinking hard about that, right, Nikki?
Mm-hmm, yeah, um, we spent quite a bit of time talking about it in the facilities committee meeting the last two weeks. And then again, like you mentioned last night, um. The both facilities committee and CFD, the trustees on both talked about some of the things that we feel like we should work on. Or discuss in terms of like, what are the roles and responsibilities of each group and how those connect to each other? Another thing that I had in our notes and. Just so you know, Diego and I did put an agenda together today that we're going to share with the capital project management firm and then I'll work with Doug. As well to make sure that we have all the information we need to get these conversations moving. Um, basic introductions of all of the people sitting on these various groups. Um. Each, each is roles and responsibilities and talking through that. Uh, expectation of reporting duties and how often and regular that's going to be. Uh. Detailed timeline for both, uh, what the capital project management firm has put together in terms of the building projects. As well as the, a detailed timeline of the bond issuance process. Um, and then a discussion around regularity of these joint meetings, like how often do we think we should bring both committees together? Uh. And I think that was the majority of what we have on the agenda right now. Are there other thoughts this group has around what should be discussed? You know, I think to, um, Kim's point earlier, it could be like not just the timeline of the bond issuance process. But how we're going to determine. What the amount is going to be and who's going to make that decision? Yeah. Any other thoughts?
They did talk and you mentioned it, Nikki, about the way a committee expansion would look like for them in terms of members of the community and so on. And, uh, that could be something to really talk about seriously too. I think Kim makes good points about. Taxpayer transparency, we really need to be careful of that. And I will tell you that, to those of you that don't know our board that well, just for regular board meetings, is that we are really committed to transparency. So anything that we can do to make this, uh, more accessible to the citizens of Alpedino, we're really, really in the market for that. Another thing that was discussed, I think it'll come up, would be, um, is there a way to. For the, our board to get a template of what the activities are between each of these committees, sort of a standardized template of measurements and. And goals and so on, that we can be very precise. Because right now we do have these sort of, not firewalls, but these sort of like bowling gutter lane thing, you know, where. We're a little bit disconnected from each other, so we're looking at for ways for the two committees to stay really connected. And then one final thing regarding the structure, Nikki, I heard that you, you were Diego. And then one final thing, but regarding the structure, Nikki, I heard you, you and Diego say this is a two to four. So this meeting has a cap on it, right? It's not going to sprawl into an all day.
No.
Go on for hours and hours. Okay, so, because I know all of you have been really good about getting on these calls and these meetings, trying to keep those to a minimum. So know that there's a cap on the one coming up. And we're going to try to minimize these as much as we can.
And is there, so at some point, the governor's going to open the state, but should I assume that both the meeting on the tenth and the fourteenth will be virtual?
Yes.
Okay. And then after that, I guess we'll see.
We will see. Yep. Yeah, I've been talking to Katie, the board president, about when we could potentially move back into in-person. And the soonest we talked about was maybe July. So we'll see what comes down from the state and the county.
Thanks, Sam.
And who knows, there might be times, um, especially if the executive order isn't completely lifted, that we might decide it makes more sense to do virtual versus in-person. We'll have to talk through what that looks like moving forward. Of course, we want to provide opportunity for the public to attend if they want to. Um, but I am curious to see what, what will come down in terms of the ability to possibly continue offering virtual or a combination of the two, you know?
And so the meeting on the fourteenth is open to the, I'm sorry, the meeting on the tenth is open to the public?
Yes.
Cause I, I had someone say, oh, you're on that committee? Oh, can I see the meetings? And I'm like, sure, if you want. Okay, all right.
All of these meetings, as well as anything joint, because the joint meeting is technically a special board meeting, since there's four trustees on, there's two on each committee. So it's, it'll be presented as a special board meeting with members of the CFD committee and the facilities committee, as well as vendors attending. There's going to be a lot of us there on that day. Uh, so yeah, that's why we're trying to establish somewhat of an organized agenda. But again, like none of the things that we'll cover that day will be action. It will just be like informative and discussion and trying to establish how these two groups work together seamlessly to tackle what each of them needs to take care of in this next year, especially.
And which should everybody, uh, expect to pack it to for the meeting, prior to the meeting itself?
Um, yeah, we got the agenda drafted. Like I said, we're going to send that to the capital project management firm, because they have several documents they're going to share with the larger group, including like a directory of all the players on both committees. Um, what, uh, the org chart in terms of information flow would look like. So if the municipal advisor wants to talk to the architect, how would that flow? And who's reporting to who type of a thing? And there was another, oh, and to Terry's point, the other thing that we're looking at doing is putting together, the name keeps changing, but a community focus group, a design roundtable, we're not sure what it's going to be called, that has several, like, membership or, uh, representation from several of the local organizations and some at-large members from the community. Obviously not too lar- large, because it's hard to make decisions or do anything when you have too many people, but we'll talk about what that group would look like and be composed of. So that there is a lot of community involvement through the, the whole design process, you know, as we, as we embark on the building projects. So yeah, a lot, a lot to talk about. But again, we will cap it. I think we were hoping it would be more like ninety minutes, but you know how it goes. So we thought we better put aside two hours, just in case.
Doubt it, seriously.
Nikki, do you feel that you need another person on the CFD administrator scoring team? I wasn't sure if, if you have enough people for that.
Oh, well, I have myself, Doug, Nicole, who works for me, and Terry. If anything, I, I could use a fourth on the bond underwriter, but that's only if you have time, you know? Okay. I could potentially see if I could get another staff person to sit in, and if not, I'll reach out. Does that sound okay? Unless you wanted it.
How about, I, I'm, I'm willing to do it if, if that staff person can't do it. Um, I'm pretty, I'm trying to meet some deadlines, but, um, it seems important to have the right number of people or the number, you know, number of people. I just want to make sure we had the right amount of people doing the scoring.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm pretty confident I can get someone.
Okay.
If I can, I appreciate the offer.
Okay, sure.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so to answer Terry's question, um, I'm actually on vacation next week. So we're trying to get this agenda semi-finalized by the end of this week. Um, the facilities committee could potentially be working, um, with the capital project management firm, but it will publish by Monday at two for that meeting on Thursday, because we, we have to publish at least the agenda. But it will be our intention to get the full package out by that Monday, the seventh.
And, uh, one thing that I appreciate from this committee, and we're moving quickly. I think Doug, you may have mentioned the fact that we're on target to, uh, maybe have the bonds sold by late, later this year in the fall. And, um, this is another episode now, if we can get all of this work done on these two positions and we get this in front of the board on the June meeting, right Nikki?
Yep.
June twenty eighth. So we will have put into position in a fairly short period of time all of the major positions that we need or assets that we need to really operate like a, you know, a low-oiled machine here uh, as a, as a committee. So I really, it's my long way of saying thank you so much for making the time for this. Really appreciate it. Apologize again for all these meetings, but they will simmer down, I'm sure. We're just in the thick of things right now.
Yes, we are.
So with that, you know, um, I think we sort of talked about number six already, about proposed future agenda items. Is there anything else people would like to have on the upcoming agendas?
The only, the only thing I would throw out is I do think, um, one of our next steps, and we've talked about this before, um, is establishing like our guiding documents or the policies that will, um, be ongoing for the CFD committee moving forward. It was suggested that we do some research of other bond oversight commissions, because their charge is probably similar to what this, at, at least while we have, um, bond issuance and oversight. Uh, but and then addition to that, like the CFD will exist once service and operational funding kicks in too. So I don't know if that would be the appropriate next task for this group, um, to develop, like, almost like its own bylaws, if that makes sense.
Is Doug, is that something you can help us with as well?
Yeah, or, uh, maybe we can lean on our bond council friends to, uh, give us some documents that would work for that.
Yeah, there's any, any template out there that we could start to use, that would be terrific. If you run across something. All right. So Nikki, you're not proposing to put that on the agenda for our next meeting, just in the future, right?
Yeah, um, we'll see what else comes our way.
It does, I just did a quick search and it does look like there's a, there's an organization, the California Bond Oversight organization that was incorporated in, I don't know, twenty seventeen or something, that does, does this, I mean, it's an organization that looks at this, so it might be worth just, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to go and dig around and see what I can learn from it, but it does seem like there must be.
Yeah.
Is, I, I mean, we might want to do a little bit of digging, but also I like the idea of our, um, the folks we've hired to help us with that as well.
Is that a government?
Just as a, a quick, as a quick aside, uh, you will have, as an issuer, you will have to do annual disclosure reports, which should have a fair amount of detail, uh, may have some of the same tables that we use in the official statement. And your special tax administrator will, will be putting that information together. There's a separate report that goes to a state agency, California Debt and Investment Advisory Commission, CDAC. Uh, they want to know how you're spending down the bond proceeds. Um, so there's, there's various reports that'll be put together throughout the year that, uh, you know, you, you will be able to look at and see, uh, the team is putting together information for annual updates. So at, at the very least, you'll have that to look at.
Yeah.
Thanks for sharing that email address. Amy, I got that.
Yeah, so I do think like, uh, a little bit of research would be good.
Actually, I looked at it more fully and it looks like they dissolved themselves. So I wouldn't bother, uh, uh, they, they, they made a motion for dissolution, so I'm not sure what happened there. But anyway, it does look like there's material out there that we can, uh, try to learn a little bit more about, um, our own procedures and, um, protocols.
And potentially, once we have the CFD administration firm on board, they're also going to be able to guide that. You know, because that's who we will work with to make sure we're producing those disclosures and, and providing the reports that are needed, which we do right now with NBS for the special tax assessment. So like, the GAN appropriations limit goes to the board every June. So it's the same thing that will just like build this into the responsibilities of this committee. Cause it, you know, in the future, I don't know that we'll need to meet monthly, you know, once things get really rolling, but I think these guiding documents will help us with that.
All right. Anything else? Any final thoughts from anybody? If not, um, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, good. Motion and second. And, uh,
A second?
Okay, great, thank you. If there's no objections then, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at five oh five. And once again, everybody, thank you so much for taking time out of your busy day for this. We really appreciate it. And we'll be in touch.
Everyone.
Thank you. Bye, guys. Bye-bye.
Thanks, everybody.